We're going there.
Oh, I can't you. There is some wifi, it seems to be okay, it's just. Unless you bring it up here, we try to catch something. Oh, is this? Working, but it's not working today. Oh, got that. You've got wifi, this is your council, that's your personal council. That's a, you've got wifi, that's already, that's. Yeah, we, we.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, be it. May I give this back to him?
I'm just having to restart.
We're not recording yet, is it? We're not recording.
No, no, four minutes.
Yeah, just to do, I do the website, I go from where.
Good evening councillors and members of the public. Welcome to Sandwich Town Council Ordinary Meeting of the Council, dated Monday the 30th of September 2024. Item number one is Chair's Opening Remarks. The first thing, I've been asked to tell you about something called the Legend of William Wing Farley, which is an immersive promenade ticket piece in Sandwich Guildhall. This has been put on by Sir Roger Manwood School, and it is on Tuesday the 15th of October. And there are three performances, 1845, 1930 and 2015. It's free to attend, but donations to the museum are appreciated. And if you'd like tickets for it, if you see Millie, the museum coordinator, she can arrange access to that. And for those of you that know, this is to do with, there's a very large picture in the museum, which actually shows the trial of William Wing Farley. So, and that's in the courtroom downstairs, the photograph. But on the 15th of October, if you'd like to attend, that's on there. And I've got my own mayor's comments here. Item number one, antisocial behaviour. And this is to do with recent instances of antisocial behaviour. We've had some here in the Guildhall, we've had at the Co-op and also at the cinema as well. And it's, it's literally like free individual youths, usual thing, hoodies and masks and all sorts of things like that. And I've spoken to the police about it and they are following up on it. And they've got CCTV images and they know who the perpetrators are. So they're following up on it. We're also pretty sure that they come into the town on the train. So I've also been in touch with South Eastern Security and the BTP, that's British Transport Police, to spot any perpetrators who look the same as these ones that are coming in on the train and to stop them from coming in. Quite possibly they might not have a ticket as well, so that one there. So that is being addressed. I don't know if the police officer's here tonight, is she?
No.
No, she's not, okay. But we are following up on this and we're going to really put our foot down to get this stopped. Item number two, Battle of Britain Sunday was a really great success. And the new rector, Harv Sebastian, prepared a really special church service. And then after that, we held a very successful wreath laying at 12 o'clock at the War Memorial in Market Street. And I just wanted to say thank you to the few councillors that did turn up and dressed up nicely for attending that, so thank you very much. Item number three, extra, extra special. This Saturday coming, the 5th of October, is Speakers' Day. And Sandwich has the privilege of being the speaker seat port this year. So I hope to see you all there. It's very prestigious, this event. And Sandwich is on show to all the other seat ports as well. So I would like all the councillors to put your best, Sunday best wedding dresses and what have you on. Gowns, hats and gloves will be worn, so if you don't like wearing those, don't come. Medals and honours can also be worn if you have any at all. And just to let you know, the town clerk and I are completely flat out trying to get this organised for Saturday. And even last minute things, we're preparing things. We had a bit of an emergency today. So if we're not contacting you or getting back to you or certain things aren't being done, it's because this event takes priority over anything else there. So thank you for your patience on that. Remembrance Sunday this year will be on the 10th, Sunday the 10th of November. And I'd like to see as many councillors there as possible for this special event. Once again, each year gets bigger and bigger in Sandwich. And it's, we put on a really good show on this. And once again, the rector is going to put on a really good church service. But can I just point out that the remembrance service, as is expected, will be at 11 o'clock at the War Memorial. And then the last item I've got here. If you have, this is to the councillors, if you have any existing or future projects that you want to take across into the year 2025-26, you will now have to complete a Funding Pro forma form and you need to see the town clerk about this. So for instance, the disability ramp in Ainsley Court, don't rely on the money being carried forward, you will have to submit something like. Oh, did we have a deadline for?
So obviously after this evening, everybody will have seen a copy. It's been shared at committee level as well. But my hope is that the committees will get to see it again. And obviously I'll be mailing it out to all the councils, as will Karen, the RFO. And really ideally, we would like them by the end of October because that gives us plenty of time then for Karen to collate all the information. Thank you.
So just two more items, oh, very quickly.
Yeah, so Mr Mayor, you mentioned about the remembrance service getting bigger and bigger. Can we please make sure there's a PA system there? Because I've been to remembrance services there in the past and there's no PA system. And the crowd is so big, you just can't hear what's going on.
Good, good point, good point. We've got somebody now, haven't we?
So the PA system was there last year, I can categorically state that. So we've had it all covered last year and it is my intention to do exactly the same this year.
Thank you very much on that one. Just two more items. Number one, something that's going around social media quite a bit. And this is to do with the mayor's expenses. And I just want to put everybody straight on the mayor's expenses. And first of all, there's a budget set up for the mayor to attend events, civic events and other events I'm expected to attend. So there is a budget to cover the mayor's expenses for these ones. And these are supposed to be civic events that we're attending. And I, different to mayors that have gone before me, I am only attending civic events. And there's 100 charity events where people keep saying, or come and play nine pin bowls or something like that. I don't attend any of those, I only attended the civic events there. And also something else that cropped up on the horrible Facebook is my trip to Belgium. So just recently, the mayoress and I went to Belgium and we went there to represent Sandwich at Ronsa, our twinning town. Because it was not a civic event, it was not paid for by the council. And the whole four days that the mayoress and I were there cost £750 for the accommodation, the travel and everything like that. And we, the mayoress and I paid for that entirely out of our own pockets. And we were representing this town abroad in Brussels and in Ronsa there. And the council, the only thing the council paid for was we took some wreaths where it had, on behalf of Sandwich Town Council on the wreaths. So I hope everybody's clear about that, so. And lastly on that one, as I said, I get free train travel. And so for certain, certain civic events where we're not wearing chains, because we're not allowed to travel on the public transport train, chains, but where we don't need the chains, and that's why I requested a mayor's sash. So when we went to Thavisham Pop Festival, the mayoress and I actually went on the train. And the train was paid for by South Eastern. So it's not costing this council a penny to do those. So I just thought I'd make that clear to everybody here, so. Lastly, please note that we've got a lot to get through this evening. So let's have some trust. And this is trust in officers. So if the officers have put something on this agenda, they've put it on because they've checked it and researched it. And also the committees, if something has gone to a committee, it's been debated, it's been discussed and it's been voted on. So please have some trust in the officers and the committees. So officers do all the pre-meeting checks. And so let's be guided by those. So on that note, I'd like to continue the agenda. Thank you for listening to me. Item number two is apologies for absence received, town clerk.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So we have apologies this evening from Councillor Murray due to a work commitment.
Super, thank you very much for that. Item number three, declarations of interest. This is to receive any declarations of disclosable pecuniary interests from members in respect of business to be transacted on this agenda tonight. Do we have any declarations, councillor Black?
Yes, I have one for item 19. It's not a pecuniary interest. I also have a long-standing dispensation of it should be discussed one side.
Who did you get? Yeah, that's good. Councillor Gray?
I have an interest in item 23. As a trustee of the sandwich heritage arbitral, that I have a dispensation from the town clerk to talk about that matter later.
Thank you very much.
I have the same dispensation as councillor Gray.
Thank you, councillor Franklin.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, item 22. I just declare another significant interest should we be talking about anything to do with the security of the property.
Indeed, thank you for that. So item 22, councillor Gray.
Yeah.
Super, thank you very much councillors. Item number four is minutes of the full council meeting and committees. And this is to approve the minutes of the full council meeting of SDC held on the 29th of July 2024 and to consider any matters arising from those minutes not covered elsewhere on this agenda. That's attachment one. To receive the minutes of the planning committee meeting held on the 15th of July 2024 and the 12th of August 2024. That's attachment two A. To receive the minutes of the financial and general purposes committee meeting held on 17th of July 2024. That's attachment three. And to receive the minutes of the heritage and townscapes committee meeting held on the 10th of July 2024. That's attachment four. Unless you have any particular items to raise on those, I will be voting on this on block. On this, councillor?
Yes, just a general point on the SDC meeting. I did a quick check before this evening and before the last meeting, we had some 23 open actions. So I'd like to ask that we bring the actions to the next meeting so we can actually go through those. A number of those probably have passed relevance now. So if we want to close, we should do so. But it does feel we've got a number of things that we've previously seen as quite important, but we have a lot of disability on at the moment.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, that looks great.
Sorry, can I make a comment on STCO 72425? Where we talked about the Georgina Maddox request of date. And it was my recollection of the meeting that the decision was that the working group would roll over to form the new management committee for the charity and that you, Mr Mayor, would be added to that. These list, that's included in the minutes, does not include my name. And I was just wondering, asking, was there a reason why that was the case?
No, it's not the case, it's a clear admission of mine, so I do apologise for that.
Was there any other queries on these sets of minutes? If not, I'd like to go to the vote. Could I have a proposer? That's it, councillor Chukka. And a seconder for minutes, that's councillor Ripley. All those in favour of these sets of minutes, please show.
Yep.
I think that's everybody, that's unanimous. Thank you very much councillors, that has been passed. Okay, item number five, payment schedules. To receive and note the payments that have missed the August schedule of payments, totaling £40.22. That's attachment five A. To receive the and approve the scheduled payments for mid-August, totaling £29,631.90. That's attachment five B. To receive and approve the scheduled payments for the end of August, totaling £1,158.78. That's attachment five C. To receive and approve the scheduled payment for mid-September, totaling £29,373.88. That's attachment five D. To receive and approve the scheduled payment for the end of September, totaling £5,968.25. And that's attachment five E. I would like to take those on block unless anybody has any questions or queries about those. Does anybody have any questions or queries about any of those? Councillor Ross? Yeah, the funding for the Speakers' Day catering. Do we know how much of that will be reimbursed?
So, so we, I haven't got an exact figure that I can share with you this evening, but there is obviously a cost for everybody that's attending, apart from a few of the Confederation. But everybody else is contributing, including myself. So we're all paying for our meals. And there's a very minor contribution from the council, but it's, we're contributing potentially to, you know, probably 90% of the cost.
Yes, the majority of it will be, will be reimbursed back to the council.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any more questions on any of the payment schedules at all? If not, I'd like a proposer for the payment schedules. Thank you councillor Walmsley, that's a proposer. And a seconder, that's councillor Gray. And all those in favour of the payment schedules, please show. Okay, that's unanimous, that's been carried, thank you very much. Item five F is the council to confirm nomination of two signatories to authorise the end of September payment schedules on bank line. And item five G, council to confirm nomination of two signatories to authorise mid-October payment schedules on bank line. I'm quite happy to put myself forward, but we would need one other.
Thank you, and just to say that the payments for the end of this month, the two people will have to be available tomorrow to do that in the afternoon. It is quite critical.
All right, okay. All right, so the one, the first one, you'd need to be available tomorrow to close the account on that one. So councillor Franklin, please put yourself forward for those. Okay then, so that'd be councillor Franklin and councillor Carter for both items five F and five G. Is everybody happy with that? If so, could I have a proposer? That's it, councillor Ungerson. And could I have a seconder, councillor Moorehouse? All those in favour of those two proposals?
Thank you.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Breaking the furniture. I think you all know who I am, don't you? I need to put it back up, so. Item number six, my favourite part, public participation. A 20-minute session is set aside for members of the public to make representations at the meeting in respect of the business on the agenda and other matters if time permits. Individual representation should not exceed five minutes. Written notice of the desire to exercise the right to speak together with the topic to be addressed must be given to the town clerk prior to noon on the day of the meeting. So do we have any speakers, town clerk?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, as you have two this evening. So the first is David Wood and his subject is going to be Jubilee Centre.
Oh, lovely, that's nice. Oh, Mr Wood, would you like to come up and join us? Would you like to be on camera or off camera?
I'd be happy to, if I don't mind.
So my camera crew will put you in the right place. So you have five minutes to speak on the Jubilee Centre, starting now. Thank you very much.
Okay, so good evening, everybody. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to feedback to the council on the work of the Jubilee Centre. Thank you to the town clerk for organising it. Thank you for having me, Mr Mayor. And it's nice to see your fellow councillors and the residents that are here as well. This occasion has given us the opportunity to feedback to you, but it's also enabled us to reflect on what has been achieved at Jubilee Centre over the last 18 months. These achievements are considerable. So some context. Sandwich Community Hub, the Jubilee Centre, is a charity that was constituted with the express purpose of re-appealing the Phoenix Centre, which sadly was forced to close during the pandemic. We submitted a number of business plans to GDC and following joint viability studies, we negotiated terms of the lease, which enabled us to reopen the building in April 2023. Sandwich Amateur Boxing Club have been granted access to the building on their own terms with GDC from November 2022. Their presence at the centre underpinned the viability of our business plan and since April of 2023, they have been one of our main hires. As soon as we were granted to lease the building, Sandwich Pantry moved from St Peter's Church to Jubilee Centre. We were then able to bring back some of the hires that had previously used the building. We have been responsible for the building for 18 months now. The following organisations use the building on a weekly basis. Sandwich Amateur Boxing Club, the Silabex yoga classes, Jan and Tom's dance classes, boxing sessions for people with Parkinson's disease, run by Sandwich Amateur Boxing Club, Sandwich Pantry. We also have fitness and cardio sessions run while at your leisure. And we are very pleased to host the CAB, the Systems of Ice Pure. So some highlights. The Boxing Club have just done their 13th weekly boxing for Parkinson's session. They work with 40-plus young people, offering quality training, £12 for three hands a session. They are completely inclusive and work very hard for children from all backgrounds and abilities. The CAB have been helping people at the Jubilee Centre for the last 10 months. They've turned, or they established presence there in November of last year. The pantry has really benefited from the facilities at Jubilee Centre. Last calendar year, Sandwich Pantry redistributed three and a half tonnes of food, over 8,352 meals. This is also, by the way, a case of ramen to call. And Sandwich Pantry supports 25 households plus each and every week. We've got some incredible volunteers who do that work. As a result of the move, the Jubilee Centre, the pantry now can also offer tier refreshments. And alongside the CAB, it's become a service that communities can be proud of. We have given a local hairdresser the opportunity to open a salment centre, which has underpinned the viability of the centre as well. Sandwich Concert Band and Railway Swing Band rehearse in the centre each week, both are fantastic. I opened and closed the Railway Swing Band on a Wednesday and they are first class. They come from across East Kent and sound like complete professionals. Currently around 200 people access the centre and its facilities on a weekly basis. I think this is a conservative estimate, but the point is it's being used. This is a huge achievement and one that we are proud of, particularly when one considers. This is a huge achievement and one that we are proud of, particularly when one considers how precarious the building's future was less than two years ago. We thought it very important to ensure that it was saved and put to community use for the benefit of Sandwich. Other things have happened at the centre, too. We've hired the Centre for a baptism party, hosted police drop-in and outreach services, I know councillors have been involved with, and hosted the KCC Children's Services event for an Easter workshop, which we also had a KCC representation with. So where are we now? There is more we need to do. We want to increase the sense of use for events and for organisations to access. We want to put the ground to use for the community garden and orchard. We would like, we would like the charity to start offering test tuition for families that need it. One of the many things we've learnt is that these things take time, particularly if you're completely relying on a small team of volunteers, all of whom are bravery and have considerable personal and professional commitments. I can report to the council that each of us has worked as hard as we possibly can on projects. We are completely independent of any political agendas. Our trustees and management committee and those that have joined us with the community shed project are all from a broad range of backgrounds and persuasions. One of the many challenges that we faced was the simple fact that the centre had to be waffle for three years, required a lot of remedial work to make it fit the purpose, much more than was anticipated. This has taken an awful lot of work and tension and a lot of learning with respect to plumbing, alarms, heating, et cetera. It's a complicated building, as it is a purpose-built community building. This, again, is one of the reasons why it's so important to save it. Our best piece of use is that we have built and are about to open a community shed. This was made possible through the tireless work of our community shed working group and a capital grant under thirty-five thousand pounds from GDC. We are delighted to have been able to have added such an impressive addition to the facility as a result of lots of hard work undertaken by the working group. We do hope this facility will be used and enjoyed by many residents. And we look forward to making many bat boxes to see if we can help mitigate the mosquitoes that cause such misery for so many locally. So we have all work to do, but we have achieved a lot. We do need encouragement and practical support. With this, we could build a centre that grows local food, provides test tuition, offers music lessons, supports young mothers and dads, becomes a local source for many to access and enjoy, but we're not there yet. We still need to secure the science future. However, we are well underway. We need more people to help us. If you as councillors are interested in helping, then please let us know. And residents, for viewers meeting, please join us in this exciting venture. We are preparing for our open day on the Saturday, the twenty-sixth of October, when Sir Roger Gale will open a new community shed, and there will be music and dancing and refreshments. We are inviting you and the whole of Sandwich to come along and see what the Jubilee Centre has to offer. Finally, I would just like to add, before we took on the community centre, Phil and Evelyn Scott have done it brilliantly for twenty years. They did remarkable work, and I think the town owes them death's gratitude. Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the second person that would like to speak is Claire Felton, and the subject is Fishergate.
Oh, super. Mrs Felton, do you want to be on camera or off camera?
Off.
Off, okay. That's it. If you stand there, that'll be fine. So you've got five minutes to address the councillors and the public on Fishergate. Please start now.
Mr Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councillors, good evening. I would like to talk just for a few minutes about Fishergate in my capacity as a trustee of the Sandwich Heritage Harbour Trust. As we all know, the Fishergate is a medieval jewel in our town's crown, a Grade One listed building, a scheduled ancient monument, and the most important medieval feature on the quay. Its historical importance in the context of our maritime history, together with its proximity to the river, was central in our application to become a heritage harbour through the Maritime Heritage Trust. We were one of the first harbours to be nominated. Now there are over twenty throughout the UK. The application was approved in twenty twenty-one. And soon after, the trustees approached the council with the proposal to use the Fishergate as its office and as a small visitor and information centre. These resolutions were passed at full council meetings between March and May twenty twenty-two, wherein it was agreed that this was by far and away the best solution for the Fishergate. The Sandwich Heritage Harbour Trust offered to take on some repairs to the interior in consultation with the council, and any necessary external repairs would be carried out by the council. Since these resolutions to allow the Heritage Harbour Trust to move to Fishergate, the council and officers have stalled on this decision, and over two years have passed. In fact, Fishergate has now been emptied for more than three years. We all know that buildings only deteriorate when empty. Despite many attempts by the Heritage Harbour Trust to move these resolutions forward, the council and officers have avoided this for reasons unknown. As trustees, we have been patient. We understand that the council's workload was heavy on all fronts, and we have been considerate of this. But more recently, we have completely had a lot as to why there remains a reluctance to act on what the council resolved back in March and April and May twenty twenty-two. This significant delay has had a severe impact on our work as the Heritage Harbour Trust. We've not been able to apply for grants or carry out our plans for fundraising events. As trustees, we are now very concerned that the lack of action regarding the Fishergate may result in our status as a heritage harbour being rescinded. Nothing has changed as far as the suitability of the Sandwich Heritage Harbour Trust being the best tenant for the Fishergate. Its suitability for any other purpose is extremely limited, and this is blatantly obvious to anyone who's been inside the building. It goes without saying that the trust has a vested interest to look after the building with competence and a duty of care. The trustees are well aware of the issues regarding listed buildings, as several of us live in listed houses, and we are not deterred by the responsibility that this entails. We are also mindful of the council's wish for a sustainable solution to Fishergate. Again, the Heritage Harbour Trust would fit the criteria. Our heritage harbour status is a long-term project for the town and for the promotion of our maritime history. It's our aim to create a small maritime museum on the quay, working with the council and with the Sandwich Museum. As a past councillor of this wonderful town and a former colleague of yours, Mr Mayor, I know that you and other current and former councillors with a passion for our town's history have been very supportive of the Sandwich Heritage Harbour Trust and its plans with the Fishergate, for which we are extremely grateful. I now urge you and your council to move forward on the resolutions that are already in place and allow us to help look after the Fishergate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that one of the speakers?
Yes, that is, Mr Mayor.
Oh, that's super. Thank you very much for my two speakers this evening. That's very well put over. Item number seven on the agenda is a verbal report from our Dover District councillor on matters relating to Sandwich. Councillor Morehouse, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First thing is the update on Fifty-seven Lew Street. And I'm assured that there's going to be a meeting in October with the senior management. I will have a response back to this council at the end of October meeting. Secondly, the disputed piece of land between Townhill Road and St Bart's Road. So it's been confirmed that there's no, there's been no application for moving possession of the fence. There will be a discussion with the planning manager to discuss the next steps and ascertain whether any enforcement action is expedient. Thirdly, a Montague in place with regards to the tree planting on the boundary of Black Lane. I've not had any response from DDC on this. I'm now pursuing this with Abby. I walked up there the other day and noticed, it's a great pity, these trees should now be well established in providing privacy for the residents of the new development. And the fact they've not is entirely regrettable. I had a meeting on the twenty-ninth of August regarding the waterways. And we have been advised of the culvert underneath the bridge that links Loop Street with the playing field, cricket pitch, et cetera. That culvert, as it currently is, is two hundred and thirty-millimetre in term diameter. But it's been expanded to nine hundred millimetres. It should provide much better water flow. With regards to the works, the works are scheduled to take place within the next window of opportunity, which is between the fifteenth of February and the fifteenth of April twenty twenty-five. I attended a meeting last Thursday regarding the events in the town, specifically regarding some Facebook comments that were made towards the end of July, when DDC got the blame for not allowing Market Street to be closed. The reason that Market Street, the refusal was, that was refused was because the event organiser submitted the application too late. There's a whole new policy being implemented. This is as a result of a fatality in Pentchester Gardens in twenty twenty-two. The corporate director at DDC had to attend the inquest. And obviously, as a result of that, DDC have reviewed their events management policy. There will shortly be a designated support for event organisers within DDC who will be contactable directly via the event organisers and not by ward councillors. In the meeting last Thursday, I did make it clear that there were three matters of urgency regarding the events. Firstly is the fun fair for the Christmas lights that's taking place in DDC own land in the Gull Park. Secondly, the Grass Creek area for the Sandwich Salute the Forties. And I have made it clear that although the event is taking place next May, the event organiser needs to ascertain what his budget's going to be. And if he has to allocate extra funds to compensate for the loss of car parking space, potentially, although I am assured that discretion will be used. And I do appreciate the fact that the events in this town bring a lot of interest. And it would be somewhat negative, well, even somewhat negative, to do anything that's going to damage the events that we have in this town. And lastly, the weekend event. Again, although this event is held in June, planning has to take place much earlier than it would normally be because delivering a French market in the UK post-Brexit is very, very difficult. Finally, in regards to Botman's Hill Cemetery. And I have again asked what the purpose of the notice board has been erected directly in front of land that we own, of a building that we own, sorry. And I've also raised the issue with the lighting with the dark evenings descending on Thomas. It becomes more and more expedient that we have that addressed. Thank you very much.
Councillors, did anybody have any questions for councillor Morehouse, please? Councillor Wilds?
Councillor Morehouse, you've mentioned the window of opportunity is in April to May.
It's the fifteenth of February.
Sorry, February. So what's the
Water bowls.
Backgrounds of that. Because of the water bowls, surely they're protected spaces. What they're nesting or?
Yeah. They're all.
Councillor Chukka?
It's the least active period of the year. There's no guarantees that this is being postponed another few times. It's just the next window of opportunity to do the work. But it will be very much driven by the environmental experts around undertaking the work itself. So that is the next time. It's twice a year they can actually do the work if there are water bowls present. And that is the next opportunity.
Could you say please in the direction of councillor Morehouse?
Sorry, councillor Morehouse. At the last meeting, we talked about the double yellow lines outside the Sandwich Medical Practice, which means that people get ticketed immediately, and you were going to investigate that with Dover District Council Park.
I will contact DDC then, the parking manager.
Were there any other questions for councillor Morehouse at all? That's all. Okay. Thank you very much for delivering that report, councillor Morehouse. Thank you very much on that. So next item is item eight, we have a verbal report from our Kent County councillor on matters relating to Sandwich. Councillor Chandler? Did you want to be on camera or off camera, Chancellor?
I'm quite happy to be on camera.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Been so many times. It's sad. Good evening, Mr Mayor. Good evening, councillors. I was going to start tonight by letting you know of trading standards activity because they have just carried out one of their biggest operations across Maystone City and Dorbut. And this is working with Kent Police Officers and HMRC and dogs. You'll see the features of the wonderful dogs that are tracking drugs and cash if you go online. But it was mainly to say that they were targeting illegal bakes, illegal tobacco. And they have huge success and a huge amount of illegal stock has been, I've found, identified and confiscated. So they do considerable numbers of these particular activities. This one happens to be focused on those three towns, including Dover. But also, I thought members might be interested to hear about the initiative, which is not taking place here, but nevertheless is targeted on the underage teens purchasing bakes. And we all know that a considerable number of the bakes are illegal and also the damage it can do now to young people who are vaping where they wouldn't necessarily have smoked. So there is pilot which is going on in Tombridge Wells. And that will contribute to a national scheme that is happening. I thought it might be worth just mentioning, because it might be helpful for the town's businesses to to know that Trading Standards work continually with businesses, developing partnerships to drive economic growth and protect residents in Kent. And they can investigate persistent, serious criminal activities, those involving fraud, counterfeiting, scams, doorstep crime, and persistent tumor detriment. Support businesses by offering professional business advice and guidance. And audit high-risk businesses, such as farms, food and seed producers, importers, wholesalers and retailers, who provide animal health, welfare and food advice. They carry out regular market surveillance at Kent courts, at markets, and boot players to prevent unsafe or illegal products. And they reduce the illegal sale of alcohol and tobacco to children and young people. So it's worth knowing all of those things that they do all of the time. So the operations happen every now and then, but those activities Trading Standards carry out to keep consumers safe and businesses safe all of the time. There is also a Trading Standards, say, traders organisation where you can find traders that have been checked by both Trading Standards and Kent Police to provide some reassurance. I wanted to update on Discovery Park, which of course is part of Sandwich. And those who were here in two thousand and eleven, which I think is probably not all councillors, but will recall the dismay, I think, in the town when Pfizer closed its European Research and Development Headquarters at Sandwich. And at that time, there was a government-created task force, which was chaired by the then leader of Kent County Council, Paul Carter. And a lot of initiatives were taken forward. The government designated the site as an enterprise zone, which gave business very good. And it became the most successful enterprise zone in the country. So it seemed a bit like deja vu in twenty-three, November twenty-three, when Pfizer announced proposals to exit remaining pharmaceutical sciences, more molecules, and to discover, to discover part. So it put five hundred of its employees at risk of bankruptcy. And the response to that was a new task force, again chaired by the KCC leader, Roger Goff, which considered how it could help in partnership with others. And a large-scale programme measures was put in place, including career spares, enabling multiple companies to showcase their businesses, local universities, that's all three of the universities, Christchurch, University of Kent. enabling multiple companies to showcase their businesses, local universities, that's all three of the universities, Christchurch, University of Kent and University of Greenwich, offering a specialist programme business advice and support for new business startups. And there is a whole raft of new initiatives, including finance support from Kent County Council for new startup businesses. So a considerable number of those have been very successful. A number of previous employees have launched their own businesses with the support both KCC and Pfizer. And there is, the task force will continue, so the work's not quite done yet and it will meet again in later in autumn. Anybody who wants to read more detail of what's going on there can look at the paper that was at the last on the agenda for the last growth, economic development and community meeting in the KCC, where there was a very full description of all the work that has gone on. And the support that Discovery Park is receiving from a number of sources, but including KCC. And finally, I wanted to remind the council that we're currently consulting on the full draft of the new local transport plan until the eighth of October. Local Transport Plan Five, which is called striking the balance. Specifically because, and I'm sure it hasn't escaped your notice, that under the local road network section, it identifies that Sandwich bypass is one of those locations where it's identified there needs to be some work. And the strategic aims, it says, is to ensure the junctions on the bypass can accommodate the development and its effect on growing traffic volumes. And to ensure that the corridor as a whole has sufficient capacity to realise the benefits of any junction upgrades and to provide reliable and safe journeys along its length by meeting the needs of users along the main corridor between Fanich, Dover and Foston and High. There's then a description of what needs to happen to enable that. So I wanted to point that out because I'm sure both councillors and local residents may well have views on that particular item. But particularly in the light of the fact that the recalculated housing targets. So the new government has recalculated housing targets for district and borough councils. And the indicative new numbers indicate that Dover District Council have an increased housing target of over forty percent. So the increase in their housing target is over forty percent. So I'm sure you'll be aware that their local plan is due to be completed, its process is very shortly. The indication is that that will probably need to be reviewed quite rapidly because of that increase of forty percent in housing targets. So I just, I just wanted to sort of make sure that council were aware of that potential impact on the network. So, thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I wish you a very good day on Saturday? And apologize that I won't be able to join you. I have one of those rare things, a hospital appointment.
Shame, shame. Were there any questions, councillor? Are you okay to set questions, councillor Chandler?
Thank you. The last item, it's a segue to the issue I wanted to mention and bringing things back to a local nature. Roadworks, et cetera, obviously nobody likes to encounter them. It causes a lot of complaints, but I think we've had a spate of roadworks within the town that have caused a lot of issues for many people. I'm sure I'm not the only one, but I've been contacted many times by residents and businesses regards to disruption this summer. We had on just one day, we had for a few hours, only one access into the town. The Toll Bridge was closed, but that in itself, the Toll Bridge, so all of these were important pieces of work and I appreciate that. But none of them were emergencies. The Toll Bridge, we actually had, people couldn't walk across the bridge, but there was no real communication around that, apart from people at the time it happened. So what I wanted to ask was just to set a challenge of yourself is maybe either for the next meeting or offline, I'm more than happy to engage with you. There's got to be a much better way to communicate with people, both businesses and residents. Because I've been doing a lot of stuff myself, direct to KCC highways, but I don't always get the answer immediately. Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. There must be a way, you've got a community engagement officer within the highways. And there must be a way of improving the network of communications.
So, yes, I accept that there have been significant problems. And in particular, in respect of the Toll Bridge. So I too was picking that particular issue up. And just to be, so that you're aware, the the original contract was issued with pedestrian access. So it was an issue that lay with the contractor. And we paid considerable efforts to then address it with the contractor, including sending somebody not, and contractor not being aware, to ensure that they were complying with what they were required to comply with on the second day of their contract. So I can only apologize that that particular contractor did not comply with the contract that he was issued to on that first day. There has been a lot of discussion about communication around roadworks. Sandwich is not the only town. And the village is separate too. And I think it is it is sometimes difficult for street worksies to put out, well, put out the notice, the advance notice. And I'm sure the town clerk gets those. That I have, what I have indicated is that the information that's contained in that is often not sufficient. And it would be really helpful to have more complete information. The cabinet member, Leo Baker, has accepted that. But there is a balance between providing or creating a huge raft of additional work for officers who are under pressure as it is. You'll all be aware that we don't have enough budget to do what we have to do. So there is some work going on to see how we can achieve that without actually overburdening the offices. We need to get the stuff done because actually we want to get the highways mended. But I'm happy to come back at the next meeting and see if I can offer any more.
Yeah, and I'm happy to have a conversation with you about my reflections on things because there are ways and things that can be improved. I have direct access sometimes to street works themselves.
Of course, there are.
Yeah, so, yes, maybe it's parish council, I shouldn't be entitled to, but there are ways to improve things, I'm certain.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you for that. I don't know if there's any other questions. If not, councillor, I just have one question myself. The town clerk sent for a newsletter from KCC today to do with highways. I think it came from Jenny Walton or somebody who was the community engagement officer for highways east. And it did say that for hip, sorry?
Yeah, it's a newsletter, it was the second one.
That's right. And it said for the highways improvement plan. It said that KCC had received three hundred thousand pounds in grant money. And it said that obviously different councils could apply for that money. Are we able to apply for that ourselves or do we have to do that through yourself or?
You don't have to do it through me, but you do have to do it through the highways improvement plan.
I see. Okay then. And we could perhaps get that money to make improvements to crash sites or other things.
So it will be entirely dependent on the priorities that the council identifies in its highways improvement plan, which is a ongoing piece of work.
Of course, of course, okay. I'll see if I just, just wanted to clarify that point. We can claim that money then, so.
Well, I'm not guaranteeing that you are. Let's be clear about this. I'm not actually guaranteeing that the priorities that you have will be eligible for whatever grant money there is, but that will be the route.
So we can try.
And it is three hundred parish councils that have access to the money, so it's a thousand pounds per council. We need to have a highway improvement plan first to be able to actually have anything up under the microscope from KCC. So some steps we have to go through first.
But I think the first step, which is funded by KCC, which was the speed survey funded by KCC, it had been.
Thank you for that. Yeah, it's just, it'd be nice to have, even if we've only got a thousand pounds, it'd be nice to have a thousand pounds to do something about the speeding in the town because it is getting dreadful now. But thank you, councillor Chandler, for.
Well, which obviously will, the speed survey outcomes, which I'm sure you've seen, will inform that particular discussion about speed.
Of course. Thank you very much for that. Thank you for delivering your report, councillor Chandler. You're at liberty to either stay or take your leave if you haven't eaten yet.
Thank you.
Okay then. Item number nine is report from local police representative and community warden for Sandwich. This is to receive reports from the local police and community warden if available. What do we have?
No reports, Mr Mayor, but PC Lauren has been today because obviously we're ongoing into the investigation. So she's in contact with the council and she has visited the Guildhall today just to further her investigation.
I see. Okay. Could we ask PC Lauren and also Peter, the KCC warden, if they could perhaps give us an update, a written one, if they're unable to attend? It's just it'd be useful for the councillors and the public. Thank you very much on that. Item number ten, updates from councillors to receive a note, further updates from councillors on meetings that they have attended as nominated representatives of this council. Do we have any councillors? Councillor Franklin, please stand.
The Porton Hailand Commissioners, with a party from the Environment Agency, went on a river trip last Thursday, the twenty eighth of September, to inspect the growing reed beds that are encroaching on the navigation of the river. But particular concern is a reed bed in front of Willoughby, opposite the town quay. The reed bed obstructs visibility of the Toll Bridge to visiting vessels and is slowly narrowing the navigation. The inspection ended at the North Poldest Sluice, which is the boundary with Porton Hailand. The meeting continued here in the council chamber, where scientists from the Environment Agency explained the surveys that are taking place in the river to check the depth and width of the river. He explained that the silting up of the river is a natural phenomenon between a tidal river and a freshwater estuary. And a natural balance will be achieved in a hundred and thirty years, so everybody worry. Just be a little dribble going down. The old vessels in the stolid cut are also discussed and are being closely monitored. The blits are starting to disintegrate and pieces are being found in the river.
That's super. Thank you very much for that, councillor Franklin. Did anybody have a councillor plaque?
Yes, that is. Councillor Malley and I attended the drop in session that the police had last Friday in the Guildhall. One of the issues though, and it refers to the use of the Jubilee Centre. We found it very difficult to actually get a night where we could get in there, so we had to move to Guildhall. Maybe with a bit more forward planning, you can make it happen at the Jubilee Centre again. There's got to be a night where people are going to be around. Secondly, the tourism forum, the chair of the tourism forum and I invited the cruise director from Doverport. We took him and the head of tourism, Dover District Council, around Sandwich. We also took them to Richborough because the idea is we want to get cruise ship passengers coming because they spend more money. They spend a longer time here and it would really boost the tourism aspect. So thanks also to the conference group and to the Belt Inn for hosting that and for anyone else who contributed. But Richborough was particularly important. He thought this is a good place to stop for foreign tourists. We also had the tourism forum last Thursday and there was a lot of discussion there. They're particularly interested in what is happening on the pitch. But they do want more photographs and they want more publicity. As you know, I've been putting things in. Councillor Wilds has, and I've been putting some more on. But they're looking very much for visuals rather than understanding the history that many of us are concerned about.
Of course. Thank you very much for that. Councillor Chukka.
Just a couple of activities to mention. So first of all, I attended the Dover District Design Place Panel Review along with councillor Franklin and councillor Morehouse, representing Sandwich Town Council. And that was at Discovery Park and it was around the Discovery Park development that's been involved in preparation. So it was the latest review that involved the new design and architects that are undertaking the work for the owners. The panel was basically a peer panel review where other experts reviewed the plans and gave their comments on that. And we got sight of the findings from the panel that I shared with all councillors. Second thing, this involves myself, councillor Morehouse, councillor Malley and councillor Ripley. I've had meetings with DDC partners and spaces then, a meeting with the Sandwich Environment Conservation Group. What we're doing collectively is looking towards developing a selective mowing initiative. When I say developing it, we're at a stage of scoping out what might be possible with the aim of hopefully coming to a future STC meeting with a proposal to consider then to take on to DDC. So the initiative is in development, but we are engaging with DDC at the outset to make sure what is possible is actually factored into any proposals.
Super. Thank you very much for that. That's all moving things along nicely. And just from my, from the chair, I had just three items just recently, which are of good news. On Friday night, we had a museums initiative because Sandwich Town Council was actually, actually I think it's Toll Bridge Fund, has actually bought the Roman Bowl. So we are now the owners of the Roman Bowl. The museum coordinator had an open evening for the Roman Bowl and it was a competition, an art competition for the Roman Bowl. And myself and the Art Society drew prizes for that. It was nice to see a number of people there to actually see our new acquisition, which is really good. So that was a major development there for the museum. And two other ones were just recently, wearing my new sash, which was nice. I attended the opening of the first of two K six telephone boxes. And these are the ones that were bought by the previous administration several years ago. And unfortunately, nothing has happened with these due to the interim between one administration and another. As with a lot of things in this town, it had fallen into a void. Nothing was done with it with these telephone boxes. And then quite luckily, one of our councillors, councillor Wilds, picked up a bit. And he has completely refurbished one and the second one is in the process of being refurbished. But these are items that will make our town outstanding and look really good to visitors. And when I go to other towns, if I look around and I see items of street furniture that have decayed or broken or paint breaking off or what have you like that, it puts me off of the town. So that's a good initiative there. And the other one that I was going to talk about was the when it's still Thursday, I think it's Thursday evening, was the, we now have a small committee of friends, which is Friends of the Empire Cinema. And this was set up on Thursday evening. And so in order to assist with the Empire Cinema, we're very lucky to have a cinema. Problem is in Sandwich, we take so much for granted. Whereas the people in Deal have been petitioning for decades to try and get their cinema back into use. Here in Sandwich, we have got an up and running cinema. And if it isn't used, we could lose it. So now we do have a Friends Committee, which will support and promote cinema to keep that going. And I think that's integral to this town because if you don't use the services, you'll lose the services. So thank you very much to the councillors. Actually councillor Wilds has set that up again. So thank you very much for that. So. That's very good. Was there any more mention? If not, I'll move on. Thank you very much. Item number eleven is financial information. And if you have a budget for the election, financial statement, cash book and bank reconciliations and reserve reports. Item A is to receive a note, Sandwich Town Council Bank. Item A is to receive a note, Sandwich Town Council Bank reconciliation as of 31st of July and 30th of August 2024. Item B, to receive a note, Sandwich Town Council Financial Budget Comparison Reports as of the 31st of July and 30th of August 2024. Item C is to receive a note, Financial Statement Cash Book as of the 31st of July and 30th of August 2024. And item D is to receive a note, the reserves report for the following at the date of 23rd of September 2024. And that is the Drill Hall, the Highway Improvement Plan, IT, Monksville Nature Reserve, operating funds and general fund. So I'd like to take all four of those items on block to vote on those unless there are any particular interests or issues with any of those. Does anybody have any issues with any of those statements, 6A to 6D? If not, I'd like a proposer. Councillor Franklin and a seconder for those four reports, councillor Morehouse. All those in favour of those reports, 6A to 6D, please show. That's unanimous, thank you. And that carries item number 11. Thank you very much. Item number 12 is the Maddox Fund update. And the town clerk is to share a report with details of an update valuation as provided by EFG Harris All Day for the investments. The report contains an update from the executors Williamson and Barnes with a request for a decision in relation to shares held by an estate in the South African companies. And this is attachment number seven. Before I hand over to the town clerk, I'll do those afterwards. So I'll hand over to the town clerk to bring us up to date on the Maddox Fund. Thank you, town clerk.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the town council has now received confirmation from EFG Harris All Day that the transfers of the shares from the Maddox Estate have now been completed to the Town Council discretionary managed account. The account Georgina Maddox Fund has an up-to-date valuation report shared by EFG Harris All Day and that's attached for you, appendix 7A. The council advised by EFG Harris All Day that it would be prudent before any changes are made to the investments to arrange a meeting with the council to discuss the portfolio and the future plans for the funds. I have managed to provisionally schedule a pre-meeting on the 28th of October and which would be conducted online. So I just would really like opportunity for members to consider that and to agree that this evening. In addition, the council has received further correspondence from the executors Williamson and Barnes for the Maddox Estate. They are continuing their work on the accounting and tax affairs of the estate and have shared a form HM Revenue and Customs Statement to income from estates. This is attached for you at appendix 7B to report. During the administration of the estate, income arising from assets belonging to the estate is subject to income tax in the executor's hands. The statement shows the income element of the estate attributable to STC's inheritance for the period up to the 5th of April 2023. The estate's tax return for the period ending the 5th of April 2024 has been submitted by the executor. An un-received, the HMRC confirmation of tax position for the period, a similar statement will be forward for the tax year 2023-2024. In the letter from the executors dated the 25th of March, it was confirmed that the executors transferred ownership of a further tranche of stocks and shares to STC by way of a further interim distribution. Therefore, dividend income relating to the allocation of investments has continued to be paid to the executors. This income does not belong to the estate, so must not be included in the estate's tax returns or reflected in forms R185 Estate Income issued to the beneficiaries to the estate and that's shown at appendix 7B. The executors have calculated the sum due to STC in respect to this period to the 3rd of May 2024 and that's £35,156,003. There are two statements that have been shared to show how the sum was calculated and these can be found as appendix 7C. Now that the stocks and shares are transferred to STC into the new account, the executor will be able to work out the final sum due to the council. As we know, Mr Georgina Maddox owns some investments in the USA and the processes are still ongoing in the USA. It is not expected to receive the clearance required from the US Inland Revenue Service until at least July 2025. It has recently been discovered that Mr Georgina Maddox was entitled to 228 shares in Sibiang Stillwater Limited and 72 shares in Standard Bank Group Limited. These are both South African companies and the English grant of care base does not give the executors authority in respect of them. The company registrars have confirmed that the holdings cannot be sold or transferred unless a grant of representation is obtained from the Supreme Court of South Africa. UK stockbrokers advised on the 29th of July that the holdings were then worth around £660 and £18 respectively. To collect the investments would involve instructing a South African lawyer and it has been concluded that it would not be economic to collect the investments. The executors are therefore suggesting that it may be possible to donate the shares to charity. The executors propose that they take no action to collect these investments but are asking for agreement to write one letter to the company registrars asking if the shares can be donated to charity. If the council does not wish Williamson and Barnes to write the letter, they must be notified in writing by November 2nd of October. The other beneficiaries have been written to in like terms.
Okay, thank you for that, town clerk. So the recommendations that the councillors have to look at and agree this evening are members are to receive the update dates from EFG Harris All Day and Williamson and Barnes. Members are to agree the proposed online meeting with EFG Harris All Day on the 28th of October 2024. Members are to agree the proposal to donate the South African shares to charity as suggested by the executors and Williamson and Barnes as the recovery of these investments would not be economic given the costs involved. So those three items, I'm quite happy to take them on block unless anybody has got any issue with those. Councillor Chukka first.
Yes, just a question on one that actually needs action from us, which is regarding the letter. What's not clear to me is what does donating to charity actually mean? But secondly, I'm assuming we or the Georgina Maddox Fund will get charged for the letter being sent by Williamson and Barnes unless they're doing that without incurring any charges against the fund. So it seems a bit strange that we would be charged for something that actually in the great scheme of things is not a significant amount of money.
Indeed. Thank you for that. Did you want to reply to any of those, town clerk?
Well, sadly, as I've already just posed questions this evening, I won't have an opportunity to give you an answer this evening. And obviously, we're on a very tight deadline. If they don't hear from the council by the 2nd of October, then they will be writing the letter. So it's, I think with those questions and queries, you're going to have to make that decision with the information you have in front of me. I'm sorry.
And there will be obviously a charge from solicitors and Williamson and Barnes. But sometimes these, this has cropped up before and I believe a member of the council undertook some liability online and the council had to pay to clear that. So councillor Anderson.
Yes, well, just following up, councillor Shubham, I mean, we're told donate to charity. I would be generally in favour of this. It doesn't seem that these sums are large enough to warrant any other active action. However, are we doing a South African charity or a UK-based charity?
Yeah, what the problem is, is we can't get the money out of the country. So it has to be to a South African charity.
Well, I would say something like Oxfam would probably be appropriate.
Indeed. Councillor Wiles?
I mean, another alternative is to do nothing because these are under the IHRA state. It could be in 10, 20 years from now or in South Africa changes and we get the money in some way. And these could be shares that, you know, quadruple or if they're like Apple or something like that, we could be.
Indeed. Indeed, that is correct. That's true. So, so okay, with those items there. Oh, sorry, councillor Brink.
Yeah, can I just make one comment, please? We note in the report here a transfer of another tranche of money to Sandwich Town Council. I have written to the mayor, sorry, to the town clerk saying can't we invest, we Sandwich Town Council, invest this large chunk of money? Because councillors are working very hard trying to earn a few pounds on the market when we're losing out on thousands of pounds of interest.
Indeed, yeah, that's true. That's something that would have to.
So all I'll say to that is EFG Harris All Day's advice was to meet with them first. So I, you know, I can only give you their advice. I'm certainly not a financial expert myself and I can only relay to you what the company that we are paying, you know, obviously for the fees charged. And they are the ones that are giving me professional advice. So I'm giving you that professional advice.
Yeah, but you know, if we had a large sum of money while we're waiting for EFG Harris All Day, you'd put it in the bank and earn some interest on it.
It's in a discretionary account, isn't it?
So I think the issue is that it's sat in the STC account at the moment and it's not in the discretionary managed account. And that's what EFG Harris All Day have said to me. They don't suggest that we do anything about any funds until you've had a meeting with them. I mean, I'm, you know, if you want to bring it back to the next meeting, but obviously the pre-meeting is scheduled for the 28th of October, which would be the same evening as the third council meeting. So really it's for members, if you, you know, if you feel strongly about it, if you want to bring a report to the next meeting, obviously there's that opportunity.
So we can do something about it, but by October, so.
I just think it's prudent for us to generate money for the council. And we've been waiting for the general power of competency and stuff like that in the past.
Yeah.
And I don't see, you know, why as part of the investment portfolio, we as the council don't have to do everything through Harris All Day. We could just open a deposit account with our existing bankers and have that Georgina Maddox money ring fares.
Indeed, indeed. Yeah, we could.
And the RFO has been posing that question to members for a number of months about thinking about a bank account. And you haven't progressed that. So, you know, I mean, at the moment, obviously it's sat in the STC account. But, you know, if you wanted to explore opening a new account for, but obviously until you've got the trust set up as well, that's the other issue. You haven't got the governing document set up yet. So, so, you know, we're in a bit of a chicken and egg situation unfortunately because things haven't progressed with setting up the governing document. You know, we've got the discretionary managed account open now. And that's their professional advice. That's why I'm just sharing with you their professional advice. Obviously, if you've got expertise or, you know, you want to have a report, you could bring that for the next full council meeting and have that debate with everybody.
I think it's prudent if we go ahead with this meeting. And then we've got full council, so we can then bring that up at October for council, make a decision. And so, as you say, it is a shame, but unfortunately, like with a lot of these things, they take a long time. It's a bit like with the shares in America and, you know, that's another issue. Do we wait to hear from the IRS or do we not wait to hear from the IRS? This is, this is the problem. Unfortunately, all these wheels move very slowly. So if we postpone that until, we'll check October and then we can make a decision then.
Well, on that, it might be worth asking Williamson and Barnes what's the value of these shares in America? Because it might be a similar situation where the amount of time and fee and effort that they're expending is not an economic prospect.
That's true. Okay, thank you for that, councillor Franklin.
I just think I was clear with councillor Anderson. I think we should just get rid of them South African shares and give them to Oxfam because it's, I drag it on.
Indeed. Well, that's what we're going to vote on now. So I think we'll go through these one by one just to make sure everybody's happy about this. So members to receive the updates from Harris All Day and Williamson and Barnes. Those, can I have a proposer and seconder for that first one to receive the notes? Okay, so that's councillor Chukka and councillor Brink. So all those in favour of receiving the reports, please show. That's unanimous. Thank you. That's been carried. And members to agree the proposed online meeting with EFG Harris All Day on the 28th of October. And somebody just proposed that, councillor Brink and councillor Black. All those in favour of the meeting on the 28th? That's been carried. And then lastly, members to agree to the proposal to donate to the South African shares to charity as suggested by the executors Williamson and Barnes due to the recovery being not economic. So could I have a proposal, a seconder for that to go ahead? To donate them to, say, Oxfam charity.
I would not support Oxfam.
It should be a local South African charity. Oxfam is international.
A local charity with a similar.
A local South African charity.
A local South African charity, yeah.
Perhaps the children would be nice. So those in, could I have a proposer for undertaking this? The donation of these shares. So once they're gone, they're gone. And a seconder for that. So can I have a brain of proposer? Councillor Anderson's proposing. Could I have a seconder? Councillor Ripley there. And all those in favour of donating the shares to charity? And those against? And any abstentions, please? That's councillor Ford's issue one. So that, that is actually carried now. So that's all those recommendations done. Thank you very much for your wisdom on those. Item number 13, Making Space For Nature Initiative. And town clerk to share a report with details of a request received from the volunteer tree warden to list the Cowley's Meadow hedgerow planting onto the map of Making Space For Nature in Kent and Medway initiative. And this is attachment number eight. And the recommendation is members to agree the requests from the volunteer tree warden and give their permission for Cowley's Meadow hedgerow to be added to the map for Making Space For Nature in Kent and Medway. Did anybody have any queries on this? Is that a query councillor Anderson? If you can get up, please do so.
I strongly support this. I can't see a problem with it at all. And I think we should just vote for it.
Councillor Morehouse? And all those in favour, please show. That's unanimous. That's been carried. Item number 14, Markets On The Forecourt. Members to receive a report from councillor Chukka that details the approach for the Saturday market over the summer period and seek a debate to consider continuing with the Saturday market and expanding the Thursday market to include the hub. And this is attachment number nine. Before we actually discuss this, I just want to say a few words. I wanted first of all to say thank you to both the Guildhall staff and also to councillor Chukka for leading this initiative. So, you know, we, this, for those that remember, we used to have a Saturday market for a short while and that dispelled and went off. And then we just had the Thursday market and even the Thursday market wasn't really adequate. It wasn't working how it should have been. And the town clerk, the Guildhall staff, and in particular councillor Chukka, has picked up both the Thursday market and expanded it. So now we have actually run out of room. We haven't got enough room for the number of people that wants to bring stores to the town. I mean, I never thought I'd hear myself saying that from what it was like two or three years ago. So. And then the second thing is, is the Saturday market, that's been completely revamped. And I've visited the Saturday market myself a number of times. And the whole vibe at the Saturday market is just really brilliant. It's really enjoyable. It's really relaxed. It's, it's got a nice feel to it and it's got a different mixture of stalls to the Thursday market. And so, which is really good. When I saw this amount. When I saw this amount of money that's come in from the Saturday market that we never had before, um, I can say is well done and thank you very much for organising that. That's absolutely brilliant now. So, um, the item we, the items we need to, uh, discuss and debate is, um, whether we continue with the Saturday market is the first item. So I'll open the floor to that. So, um, the Saturday market.
Can I just very quickly just summarise what is the report? So, um, in April's S T C, we agreed to introduce the Saturday market, but we were cautious in the sense that it was, um, uh, for all intents and purposes a new initiative, so that had to be built on scratch and that the level of occupancy of storeholders was uncertain. So what we agreed was we'd come back to this meeting. So I'm meeting that commitment to provide a report to council. Um, the report on the performances over the period June to September, so it's roughly three months that the Saturday market's been running. Um, there were a number of, um, potential benefits identified in April and I think we've met a number of those, um, to an extent. We've, we've mentioned a couple of them already. Um, what we've also seen is some new, brand new businesses start up. So actually we've incubated some new storeholders who've never done it before and are starting to thrive. So that is a really good example of joining up with community and supporting community. Um, we, uh, the atmosphere we've mentioned in, on Saturday, it's, uh, it's not a ghost town on the, on the forecourt, so that's good. Um, we've also seen, um, the footfall has increased over the weeks that it's been running. Also, it's given a great opportunity to deliver tourist information. I'd like to hand councillor Ripley all her efforts of trying to get people to manage the store. Um, so that's been really successful. Now, as we move into the autumn and the winter, I think the importance of that particular store might be less, but that will be determined by councillor Ripley. Um, there have been challenges along the way. We employed somebody at the outset, um, who lasted two weeks. Um, then I filled in for a number of weeks myself, putting up the gazebo, so I know how to put gazebos out and take them down. Um, so whilst the money, it might, it's just an excess of a thousand pounds now taken over a three month period, it's not going to, uh, sort out all our financial problems. But I think in the round, what it delivers is, is a, um, point, uh, a, a hub for the, the town that people can come to. We've got one or two stores that people actually seek out and are very upset when they're not here now on Saturdays. Um, the idea to expand it beyond that date is, is, uh, I've discussed it with the town clerk and the support his effort and staff to do that, but it's the council's decision. The report includes a second aspect, which is about the Thursday market. As you've touched on already, it is beyond its capacity. So the property manager has put forward a proposal, which is to, um, invest a very small amount of money in terms of opening up the hub to be an overspill place. Um, that will mean that we can provide, uh, an additional, um, free spaces, I believe, or is it maybe even full spacer, full spacer, sorry, um, at a, a cost of £50 per, just to each stall holder. Um, but what it also does is as we're moving into the autumn and winter period, some stall holders might be, um, more, uh, content to continue because there's always some wastage because of the weather to, if they've got the facility of an indoor, um, market space.
Indeed, thank you very much for that. So, and, and on this one, I think to speed things up, I'd like to lead from the chair. So I'd like to put forward a proposal that we do continue with the Saturday markets until such a time as the weather or the interest wanes on it, which will become prevalent as the, as the cold weather sets in. So I'm suggesting going ahead with the Saturday market. It's, it's such a good initiative. And the second thing I would like to propose is that we do go ahead with the use of the hub, um, so that those that have goods that could be damaged by cold or wet weather could go into there, just with the proviso that the hub, the connecting door from the hub through, there is not, people can only come in from the outside door and not trundle through, through the, uh, through the other door, if that's okay. So that's my proposal. Do I have a second up for that or?
Mr Mayor, just one, one comment.
Indeed, please, Sam.
Oh, thank you very much. It's, it's just to say that on the 30th of November, we're having sandwich Christmas lights, so that might be a convenient point to aim to go on to.
Indeed, yeah, that'd be good, yeah. So, so you wish to have the forecourt on that, that time, do you?
Yes, please.
We're looking to that for you.
Thank you.
I'm joking. Um, councillor Black?
Yes, we've also got Dover District Council having something on the 14th of December. So you're going to do that Saturday as well.
Indeed, yes, so that was obviously.
Spectacle about Saturdays.
Obviously, well, that was always the proviso. I think councillor Chukka would back me up on this, but the proviso for the Saturday market was if an event was booked, then the event would get priority and the Saturday market would be postponed, so, um.
Interesting response. I, I think the one, uh, challenge is about the breaking continuity due to events, uh, but it is what it is. And the, the income that we get from events usually is, far outweighs what the market earns on that day, so. Uh, I, I think it stays over and ended. I don't think we set a date in the future, but we review it as it goes on with input from the, the town clerk and the staff regarding its viability.
Indeed. So I've put the two proposals forward. Um, do we have a second up for those proposals? I think it was councillor Fortiscu. All those in favour of that, please show. And any abstaining? There's just one against councillor Black. So that has been carried now, so thank you.
And, so, Mr Mayor, just to clarify, there was another, um, about this time, the latest start time and end time.
Oh, thank you pardon. Oh, right, oh, sorry, thank you pardon. There was a later start time for the Saturday market, um.
Yeah, nine thirty.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah, yeah. Nine thirty, two thirty.
Oh, so we've got, um, nine thirty to two thirty. Is everybody happy with the start date, nine thirty to two thirty? Item number 15, public convenience winter opening hours. Uh, town clerk to share a report to see the decision on the autumn and winter opening hours for the public conveniences at the cattle market and on Sandwich Quay.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, in the interest of time, I suggest we go straight to a vote.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so, um, that's a good idea. So are you proposing that, uh?
I guess I need to go.
On recommendations. Recommendations, first of Oc- October to 31st of March, reduce opening hours from nine to five, seven days a week, and, uh, 26th of October, opening hours of nine M to four P M. And the public convenience are closed on the 25th and 26th of December. So this is as in attachment 10, um, councillor Green.
And the first of January.
Oh, sorry, and the first of January, of course, for the 25th. Councillor Green is proposing, could I have a second up? Councillor Wilds?
Sorry, could, could we make an exception for any events? The Christmas lights, for example?
So, yeah, I think we do normally liaise with the event organiser and do, uh, factor in, but obviously it is the winter and, and, you know, we wouldn't be opening till 10 o'clock in the evening, for example, but, um, I know that the Christmas lights doesn't tend to, to finish that late, do you?
Tony is very, very good.
She is, yeah. Yeah, no, we faxed that in, thank you, councillor.
We faxed that in, so I've got a proposer. Councillor Wilds seconding, all those in favour? Please show. It's actually unanimous, that's been carried.
Thank you.
Uh, item number 16, allotments report. Members to receive a report from the assistant clerk with updates on progress to date with both the allotment sites. Um, this is attachment 11 and a decision is required on this.
To, um, make you see the report.
Oh, right, all right. Um, just to, I'm proposing that we note the report and thank the assistant town clerk for the hard work she's putting on the allotments there. Could I have a second up for that? Uh, councillor Morehouse, all those in favour? Okay, and that's passed, thank you very much. Um, item number 17, fundraising account and mayor's fund. Once again, this is quite a quick one. Uh, members to receive a report from the R F O to request the closure of the S T C fundraising account and to transfer the balance to the mayor's fund. And this is purely, uh, for the small amount. Recommendation, councillors are asked for approval to close the S T C fundraising account. Councillors are asked to approve moving the balance left in there to the mayor's fund. Do I have a proposer for that? Councillor Wilds and so does councillor Chukka. And all those in favour, please show. Very small sum, thank you, that's been passed. Um, and item number 18, budget setting pro forma. Uh, town clerk and the R F O produced budget setting pro forma that has been adopted by the Finance and General Purposes Committee. The pro forma, which has been updated, um, uh, since the, uh, items were raised on this at, at F and G P. Pro forma will be used in the budget setting process for the new financial year for Sandwich Town Council. Members are to note and receive the report. Um, do I have somebody to propose noting? Councillor Morehouse and a second up? Councillor Mrs Carter, all those in favour, please show. Okay, that's been passed, that's unanimous. I'll tell him if I'm going to pass.
That's fine.
Um, item number 19, Dover District Council local plan. This is to 20, 2040. Inspector's final report. Town clerk to share a report that details the communication from Dover District Council received with an update on the Dover District Council local plan to 2024. A decision is required. This is attachment number 14. And basically, basically this is just to say the final inspector's report has shown that the Dover District Local Plan is sound and there are two links where you can go and review, um, what has, has been agreed there. This will be going to full council at Dover District Council on the 16th of October to be voted on, um, following on from its, um, appearance at the D B C cabinet meeting on the 7th of October. Members are to receive and note the report. Um, councillor Chukka and councillor Franklin seconding. Oh, indeed, councillor Black?
There was some points about this.
Now, please carry on.
Yeah, it's extremely disappointing that we have now been lumbered with, um, rising from 227 houses to 282 in Sandwich. And now we've just heard from, uh, councillor Chandler that there's going to be 40% on top of that. I mean, this place has been concreted over and I think this council really has to take a much better stand on these issues. I've got a particular issue with S A P 21, a 50% increase in the number of houses and giving, um, a playing field to a, a school that is not doing very well at all and is a private institution. This is not what public assets should be used for and this really, we should be objecting to this. I've consistently objected to this. I think that a more robust response has to come from this council on these sorts of matters.
Thank you very much for that. I believe, um, I believe we did send a representation to the local plan on, on this issue and also there was a, um, a local plan meeting up at Dover District Council to which, um.
Okay.
And councillor Black and councillor Wilds. So you were sent as, well councillor Wilds was sent as the representative of Sandwich Town Council. So, um, so as well as a written, uh, representation, we have sent councillors to Dover District Council on this matter. And the 40% increase is a governmental thing that comes down from central government. So complaining to Dover District Council won't get you absolutely anywhere, but you're quite welcome to. So if you'd like to put a proposal forward, councillor Black, um, I'd happily accept it. So you can.
Well, the proposal is that we should still continue to object to the increase in numbers that are in the plan for, for, uh, Sandwich and in particular S A P 21, which is a 50% increase, uh, and doing a rather strange deal to give land to a school that is not doing very well and has in fact not been recruiting the number of students it originally set out to do. That's my proposal.
Councillor Chukka first of all.
So I was going to say, we have, um, discussed this, I think, at least two occasions previously and we did put in written comments along those lines. I, in terms of, um, speaking of a process, considering that, we'll come back into a discussion around this. If the previous comments that were submitted were, uh, looked at again and if councillor Black was willing to submit that on behalf of the council, I'd be happy to propose that as long as it doesn't veer outside the comments that we've previously submitted, um, in terms of the content.
That's what I'm looking for, indeed. So, yeah, so, so that is, these are the factors, because when I was the, um, lead councillor on behalf of the, the local plan after Joe Trussler passed away, I took it on and I fought all the numbers for all of the sites in Sandwich or the L A sites to make sure they were reduced and that they were, uh, suitable for, for Sandwich. So, and obviously I've handed that on. I'm not too sure who's the local plan lead officer now in, in the council, but we do have a lead officer on the local plan. We also have here tonight councillor Morehouse, who is dedicated, very dedicated to Sandwich and, and any building or development in Sandwich to represent Sandwich's needs at Dover District Council. That's what we elected him here for. But if, um, councillor Chukka, um, if councillor Black wishes to accept councillor Chukka's proposal, then we can vote on that tonight.
Um, I'd like to see the final version, but in principle I am not opposed to that suggestion.
Okay, then, that's right, that's great.
Can I ask a question? It's really, really quick. Is S A P 21 the same S A P 21, um, where they took this to a min?
Yes, it's exactly the same.
And it's still going on?
Yes. Plunged on regardless.
So, um, the two things we've got to vote on here. One is we've got to vote on, um, receiving the report from the town clerk, which is notifying us of the, um, conclusion of the, uh, consultation for the Dover District Local Plan. Remember this goes to 2040, so we're stuck with it until 2040. Um, and the second thing is, is the proposal from councillor Chukka that councillor Black will take this on, having seen the previous, um, recommendations sent forward to D B C. So, um, are you proposing this councillor Chukka?
Yes, so I submitted the comments on behalf of the council last time and I shared those with councillors in terms of what I had submitted, so they are available, um, as long as it's within those boundaries.
Boundaries of, yeah.
Then there's no reason why we shouldn't go back and say we're still not content and these are our previous comments, something within that framework.
Indeed, indeed. It's not going to full council until the 16th of October, so quite possibly you could sway the full council, so. But, yeah, so that's, that's democracy for you, you see, this, that's the thing as a council. So that's the proposal then for those two things. We're receiving and noting the report from the town clerk and, um, councillor Black will be making a representation for the whole of the, uh, local plan, um, the numbers in the whole of the local plan, but also to do with the S A P.
I only volunteered to do it for S A P 21.
Are you only doing it for?
I'm only doing for S A P 21.
Right.
Sorry, it's a different, different ball game if you want me to comment on, on everything else. As nobody else has objected, that's a different ball game.
I'm ha- happy to modify my proposal, but it should be just for S A P 21, um, because we have made numbers of representations of the other S A Ps previously, so.
Okay, so this is just the S A P 21 that councillor Black is going to make representations on behalf of Sandwich Town Council in line with what was sent through from councillor Chukka. So, um, are you seconding this?
Sorry, just to clarify, he's going to contact D B C or the local plan inspector to repeat what we said in the process.
It would have to be D B C because my understanding is the local plan inspector has finalized his reports and received a, 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 a letter from the admin support from them to that effect. to that effect.
Yeah, I mean, my issue is, this is a quasi judicial process which is now completed, I don't think you can, you know, shut the door after the horse has bolted, it's, we've reached the end of the line, sure.
But within the document that we've had, there is opportunity to make further comments, and they are very vital, so.
Until the 16th of October, there's nothing stopping us from sending the notice, so those are the two proposals, councillor Chukka's proposing it, a second there would be councillor Morehouse, all those in favour, please show. And those abstaining, please show. Four abstaining, okay, so that has actually been carried, thank you for that information. Okay, item number twenty, annual governance and accountability return conclusion, 2023/24, members to receive and note the audited annual governance and accountability returns 2023/24, and the external audit report, which has been received from the external auditors for this Mazars LLP, members are to receive the report and note the report, this is attachment number fifteen, so do I have a proposal for receiving and noting this report?
I just wanted to state that I want to commend the RFO for all the work which she did for this audit, and obviously we know from the external audit's report, there are no issues at all, and I'd like to commend the RFO for all the hard work that she put in for that, thank you.
Thank you very much, town clerk, so do I have a proposal for this, councillor Franklin, and a second there councillor Morehouse, all those in favour of receiving and accepting the report, please show. Okay, that's unanimous, that item's been passed, thank you councillors. Item number twenty-one, confidential matters, under the Public Bodies Admissions for Meetings Act 1960, extended by section 100 of the Local Government Act 1972, the public may be excluded from the meeting for the following items of business on grounds that they involve the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined in part one, schedule 12a of the Local Government Act 1972, by virtue of the paragraph specified against this item. Item number one, information relating to a proposal that is commercially sensitive in nature and information that is confidential that relates to the progressing of the MABIT's requests, including the sale of a property, could I have a proposal to go into confidential, please? That's councillor Gray.
Speak on this, please.
Councillor Gray, sorry, 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 can I just stop you councillor Gray, I'm looking for a proposal and a second there to take into confidential camera of this council.
I would like to query why one item, which is, we are going to discuss, is whether it should be confidential or not, one of the items in agenda, item 23, is going to be about the Fishergate, now, everything about that is in the public domain, you've heard about it this evening from Claire Burton, and why should it now be, there's nothing that I can see as to why what is to be discussed should be confidential, it is in the public interest, and I will also ask whether the town clerk has considered the public interest test in relation to having this matter confidential. So I would, I would want to vote against that particular item being confidential, and I'd like to propose an amendment to your motion excluding that, the discussion on the Fishergate in item 23.
A town clerk, please.
Thank you councillor Gray, and yes, I did consider that, the public test, but the information that the property manager is sharing with elected members on all the portfolio, including Fishergate, is not in the public domain, and so it's very important for members to have that information, and if we discuss it in the open part of the meeting, you won't have that opportunity, obviously I'm aware that your reports have been shared publicly, but because the property manager's report is confidential, then obviously I'm not in a position to let part of the reports be shared in the public part of the meeting, because then you're not getting all the information together in one place.
I agree, it's got to be one thing or nothing, so, so do I have a proposal for going into confidential, please, a last councillor Chukka, and a second there for going into confidential, councillor Mrs Carter, and all those in favour of going into confidential, please show.
I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three, four, five, sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of you.
And those that are abstaining?
One, two, three.
And those that are against, are you against as well?
Three.
That's three.
Three, okay, so that's coming.
So that's, that's been passed, that we do go to confidential.
Councillor Wilds? Sorry, Mr Mayor, but just as a slightly predant, well, it's not really predantic, it's a factual point, what it says here is that we're going into confidential by virtue of information relating to a proposal that is commercially sensitive in nature and information that is confidential that relates to progressing the MABIT's requests, including the sale of Hay Hall, but we're doing more than those two things, we're talking about the whole asset portfolio, which includes sensitive information about tenants, about leases, about limits and so on, which we clearly cannot discuss in the public domain, but the wording should have included.
Should have, yeah, so we need to.
Because we cannot, for example, talk about the details of the cinema.
No.
In the public domain, because what they see would be very, very unlikely.
All right, so could we?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was saying, where I say proposals commercially sensitive in nature, I was talking about all the assets and the local plan.
So that is saying that all the assets, but in particular that Hay Hall. Right, so that, we have held a vote on that, and by the majority, that has been passed, so this council will now be going into confidential mode, camera, so we have to ask the public to leave, thank you for attending tonight.
I've just got to get to that, everybody, no, now, right.